A lot of fun at others. Yeah, we may have some fun tonight. Okay, our agenda is the minutes for the consent agenda. We will then have the master alternative sign plan for T-Mobile. Then is the site plan design review for Adams Dairy Landing. Amended planned unit development final plan for Adams Dairy Landing. And then other business. That being said, we will address the consent agenda. I have a motion to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to the second item, which is the sign, alternative sign plan for T-Mobile. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Let me get the information put together here quickly. All right, before you this evening is a request from T-Mobile to amend a previously approved master alternative sign plan in order to allow for an onsite monument sign. You can see the site location map, I think everybody's familiar with it, on the west side of Seven, just south of MOC. The property's been there for about three years, and that was the date of their original master alternative sign plan was back in March of 2008. That was following a site plan design review approval back in October of 2007. So again, T-Mobile is now before you this evening to request approval for one freestanding monument sign, which is generally located at the northeast corner of the site along This is the site plan that they provided showing the proposed location. To the right of the screen, or south, is the TN Nails standalone building, and there's a shared access with that property. Again, the parking lot for T-Mobile is in the rear of the building, in terms of how it orients to Seven Highway. There are three existing wall signs, and again, the applicant is proposing to add to those three wall signs with the monument sign. Here's a representation of the proposed monument sign and proximate configuration with the photo mock-up at the upper right corner. The sign code itself allows for one monument sign per frontage for retail sales and service use. So in terms of the sign code, and I'll get into the sizes and locations such, it is all within the sign code parameters. However, the previously approved alternative sign plan did not allow this monument sign to be constructed. There are two possible sign options that were recommended back in 2008. The first was to allow for the wall sign only on the east side, that is along Seven Highway, with the monument sign, because one sign is allowed on the wall per street frontage as well as over any of the entrances. As presented and as constructed, actually, the three wall signs, only one is facing the street frontage, which is the one on the east side facing Seven Highway. The other two on the north and south are not over any entrances, so that's why they went through the alternative sign plan process. Their entrance, as you know with the site, is to the rear, facing the parking lot in the back. So the second option in 2008 allowed for approval of the three wall signs, again, and no monument sign. And that's what was approved unanimously at that time. With staff's opinion at the time that the proposed location of the monument sign was somewhat problematic in that it presented some visibility concerns with the shared driveway just to the south. And again, what's being presented this evening is a monument sign much further to the north on this property. What was originally approved, and even what was approved with the application prior to getting, coming before you this evening, was something located in this general area, obviously causing some potential visibility issues since there's also a monument sign for the TN Nails located approximately here. So it was best identified in terms of location to put the monument sign further to the north side. So that's what's before you this evening. Again, the applicant is requesting to keep all three wall signs. Again, all the sizes of the signs, the height and such, the monument sign are all certainly well within code in terms of the allowances. However, again, it's the location and number of signs that's really the issue at hand this evening. Therefore, staff has three options, like we did with having multiple options back in 2008. We have multiple options here this evening. The first option being the preferred option, and that is to, again, adhere to the sign code and allow the east wall sign and the monument sign only, and therefore remove the existing signs in the north and south side. And I think, you know, as the applicant will discuss, they understand that there is hopefully some redundancy in having wall signs facing the exact same direction as the monument sign. I'm not sure if there's any added benefit in having those. But again, the applicant is simply requesting to simply add a monument sign this evening. And that's what's before you tonight. But again, staff does recommend approval with those two conditions. Again, the standard administrative sign permitting process be adhered, but with that condition, again, that those two wall signs, one in the north, one in the south, be removed. So with that, I stand for any questions or comments.
Any have, do they have any questions? Yes, Mr. Parker.
Mr. Allen, just a quick question on, I'm glad you touched on the line of sight, but I'm just wondering if it's still going to be hampering any type of line of sight with even bringing that, since we have the building so far forward, and then you're adding on that monument sign, it seems to me it'd still be hampering the line of sight coming out of that TN, with TN Nails or T-Mobile there.
The height of the sign, sure, I'm sorry.
Taking a left-hand turn there. Looking at that traffic, I think it could be.
Sure. Again, it meets all the sign code requirements, so in terms of setback from Seven Highway, you know, in terms of any kind of site triangle visibility, it meets that. It is only five and a half feet. You know, there's an allowance, you know, up to eight feet in the general location. So they are, it is at least two and a half feet shorter than what they could have there. So you can see there's some trees there. It's pretty much at the, at the base of where the branches start to come into view, but it's, yeah, it's a little bit hard to see in this drawing. I don't know how far I can zoom in here, it's getting a little blurry as it is. But you can see the access is back further, where this sidewalk ends. I guess I'd defer the applicant in terms of how far that actually is, but it is, it is quite far in relation to what was originally approved, or excuse me, what was originally submitted with this application, as well as what was originally proposed back in 2008. It's certainly much farther away. I'd hate to hazard a guess in terms of how far it is from the driveway, so I'll defer to the applicant on that one.
Any other questions? Ms. Banks.
This is something the applicant may want to bring, discuss, but did they come to you and talk to you about why now they want to add a monument sign when they were approved for the three wall signs, except for advertising?
Right, that's certainly the case. Well, again, they had originally presented that as an option back in 2008. I guess I would have to defer to them to explain why that's the case now, why they'd like a monument sign. Again, I think there's some validity in having a monument sign, even with the location of the building close to Seven Highway. That's why they had the either/or last time was, okay, monument sign, but no need for signs north-south on the building, again, facing the same direction as a monument sign, which is now closer to Seven Highway than the actual building, and then keep that east-facing sign as well. So it's kind of either/or, but now they're coming back and would like to have both.
Maybe they might have discussed it with you.
Not in any great detail, no. Again, just looking to come back and ask for that monument sign, which again, isn't allowed use. However, with their approved alternative sign plan, they need to come back before you and request that variation or deviation from that.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen, if option one is the choice, then by removing the two wall signs and allowing the monument sign, will they now be in compliance then with the sign code?
Yes, that's a very good point. Exactly, they would be, the quote, "alternative" sign plan would essentially serve as the master sign plan, since it is in compliance with the code. That's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments for staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Hello, I'm Ryan Shirley, I'm with Shirley Signs. I'm the actual applicant. My customer has come to me asking for a monument sign and presented to you guys, basically with this location, I believe in 2007, when they originally asked for the three wall signs, I don't think it was known that, you know, how visible they would be, how effective they'd be. In the last three years, they found they haven't been as effective as they think. A monument sign would be, at the same time, doesn't mean they're not effective at all. They think they are somewhat effective, but at some point, you know, especially in the summer, there's trees landscaping around the buildings that potentially block view, especially on the south elevation. And then also with the other businesses, having monument signs and pole signs, they feel like that they should be able to have a monument sign also. Compared to some of their other locations, in Independence specifically, which is just down the road, where they have a pole sign, it's about a 30-foot tall pole sign, sales there are significantly higher than this location, not saying that that's the only reason why, but possibility, so.
Since you're testifying that the signs are ineffective on each of the sides of the building, then I assume that you're not opposed to having those removed?
Well, I don't mean they're not, I'm not saying they're not effective, we just don't feel like they're as effective as a monument sign would be.
Not as effective as we'd like. Mine's Brian Sedome, I'm the store manager down there, have been for coming on two years now. Thanks for seeing us tonight. But yeah, we just want a little more. When I took over that store two years ago, my first thing when I drove up, I'm like, where do you pull in for the parking? Which if any of you have ever been in my store, you probably asked the same question. The signs on the building do good, but as you're driving up, the cigar shop sign blocks ours on the north, and on the south are trees that are there. If we don't keep them really trimmed, block the south elevation to the building. So we're, we prefer, obviously, not to take down any signs, the more we can have exposure, let people know. I just, I know the manager personally at the Independence store on Nolan Road, and I hate it when he has customers that come in there, and then he calls me, goes, I got all these customers in Blue Springs that we know, they told me, they didn't even know there was a store there on Seven Highway. I'm like, you're kidding me, you know, and I just, I hate losing business, number one, but to one of my friends and a competitor of mine, number two, and to the city of Independence, I just, I just really dislike that. So I hear all the time, people come in, and I've been there two years, the store's been there three almost, and I hear people come in all the time, say, I never knew you were here. And they'll call the store, where are you at on Seven Highway? Where are you located at? We had an issue with Google Maps and our address showing up, right? So we've, I believe, corrected that with Google Maps. When people search for us, they can now find us. But they, they were just, where? And we tell them directly across the street from Long John Silver's, between the nail shop and the cigar shop. Oh, okay, yeah, I never even saw, I drove by there all the time, and I never knew you were there. So that's what we believe, the monument sign, which is kind of close to the highway there, would just help some of that visibility, and hopefully draw that business back to us and to Blue Springs. And with it being, I know one question was the concern with the visibility pulling out of there, and with being so, I mean, the building, more than 40 or 50 feet from where that driveway is, where we share with TN Nails, I don't believe that'll cause any visibility because you have the whole turning lane right here on Seven, along with the sidewalk, so you could pull out, and you wouldn't even, you could see clear down past MOC if that sign was there. So the visibility, I don't think would be an issue at all with that.
Any questions for the applicant? Silence, so I'm going to assume they have all their questions answered.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we'll bring it up here for discussion.
I'd like to make a comment. I have some friends of mine, I know what you're talking about, have asked me a couple times, where's a T-Mobile in Blue Springs? So there is a lot of confusion on where it's at, so I have no problem with that monument sign helping them out, because it is kind of a hard place to find.
Well, if I could comment, I guess since the north and the south, from what they indicated from trees and the other sign, they wouldn't have a problem with us going with option one. And just giving them the monument sign, if that's going to help, and still just keeping the east, so they'd be in compliance.
Well, and I believe that they need a monument sign to be found, because you drive right by the building, you don't know it's there. You don't know their service is there, so I concur. Any other comments?
The other, Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Charles.
The only other comment that I would make, too, is by choosing option one, we also take it from an alternative sign plan to a master sign plan. It brings it back into compliance as far as with the city's code.
Yes.
Which I think is very important, because if I understood, the testimony by Mr. Allen was, the only reason the monument sign was not approved last time was because of its location and now being moved, so it doesn't provide that type of a site distance problem. It's beneficial as far as bringing it back into compliance with the city code.
Absolutely true. I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion on case file ASP-1-11-2850 on the T-Mobile project, with staff recommendation of option one for approval.
I have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, that brings us to items number three and four, which we will combine, but I would like to vote on them separately, please. So first, well, they're both Adams Dairy, so, Mr. Hawley?
This application is, again, for a site plan and design review approval, as well as to amend the planned unit development final plan approval. Just to start off, the general location of the site is east of Adams Dairy Parkway, south of northeast Coronado Drive, and north of RD Mize. And specifically, this site has shown up on the overhead, as you can see, is located on the east end of the site. It's in the dark color. It is just west of the Marriott Hotel and Conference Center, immediately south of northeast Coronado Drive. It consists of approximately 11.6 acres, and that's just the dark area. The total site, the hatched area including the dark area, is 59.11 acres. Property is zoned, general business, with a restricted overlay for the Adams Dairy Landing project, of course. And as was stated, this request is to approve an amended PUD final plan for Lot 6, and for site plan design review approval, to redesign the former Lowe's Home Improvement Store to a multi-tenant retail building, that is 111,000 square foot, as well as to add two pad sites, each of them 3,500 square feet. And we'll put this up. And I think I'll just start with a general comparison of the two, the originally approved site and what is being proposed now. See if I've got that right. Yes. Okay. I'm sorry that these are small, to get them onto one sheet like that, they had to be somewhat small, but I think it will serve the purpose that we're going to have here. The top site plan is, of course, the site plan currently being proposed, and the highlighted area, the highlighted buildings, I should say. Maybe clarify where those two pad buildings are. I know if you're like me, when you first looked at this site plan, those two pad buildings weren't immediately obvious. The longer you look, then the more you see where those two are. Thanks, Scott. The original Lowe's building was approved for 125,000 square foot, square feet, I'm sorry, and that, I believe, included the garden center. The garden center was this portion of the building. It went through some minor changes and reduced in size, but it still never got as low in square footage as the currently proposed square footage for the multi-tenant stores, as well as the two pad stores. As you can see, there are some parking configuration changes. Again, they're not immediately evident, but obviously, when they put the two pad sites in, it changed the configuration around those two areas. In particular, you'll see On the proposed site plan, this area in here of Adams Dairy Parkway, and this area in here. You can see where the landscaping has been reduced in those, in that area to add some parking. Again, that still maintained the necessary buffer that they had there, it just reduced some landscape area. And in the staff report, I talk a little bit about that. One of the reasons there was a little more landscape area in that area was because of the type of business that Lowe's was, and the amount of activity they were going to have in the front of their store, and that had to do simply with their garden center, the activity that happened at the garden center, as well as looking past and down the line to their lumber area. It just helped to screen that a little bit. With the type of retail that's now going to be going in there, that screening really, that additional screening in that area isn't really necessary. As a matter of fact, it's undesirable for those kinds of stores, the TJ Maxx and the Home Improvement Store, the home, I guess it's, is it? Home Goods, I'm sorry. The Ross Dress for Less, and then the applicant may want to talk some about what will be going in in the very end space there. But at any rate, they're more retail in nature, and the higher visibility is a better, is better for them. Other than that, the site plan really, as you can see, remains pretty much the same. I believe, and I'll have the applicant clarify this, when I counted spaces on the map, it looks to me as though They've added some additional spaces maybe up in here, whereas it's not, not Excuse me, it's not readily apparent that those are, but there are more spaces up near to the store, and I suspect that's because the drives that were required for Lowe's were a little bit wider, and that Lowe's came out just a little bit further towards that parking lot. But there are additional spaces added up near the building. And with that, I think I will put the larger site plan on that deals specifically with Adams Dairy Landing, the original PUD was approved, the final PUD was approved in February of 2008, and since that time, there have been some minor changes, and certainly a lot of site plan and design review. Of course, site plan and design review for the inline shops, that includes Target, the inline shops that include Kohl's, the Lifestyle Center, those buildings have all come through and been approved, and they are outlined on pages three of 12 and four of 12, and I won't go over each of those. There have been some modifications within each of those. But they are now coming back and have determined that Lowe's definitely will not be there. Red Development has reacquired this property, and in so doing, they've now come up with a new plan that they believe is better for the center, and it certainly is more in keeping with the other uses that are in the center than the Home Improvement Store would have done. There is very little change to the access. There is no change to the access along northeast Coronado Drive. There is a minor change near pad building A, but that's an internal access, they just shifted it slightly to the east so that it could work around that particular pad building. As far as parking goes, as you can see, I'm on page five of 12, the parking in general is configured the same. I talked a little bit initially about the changes along the north property line. It's, you can more easily see how this area in here is the area where they added parking. This landscape island used to kind of come out like that. This landscape island, I don't believe was changed at all, but I do think that some parking is added over there, parking spaces. But as far as landscape area, it remains pretty much the same. The loading area in the back of the store, obviously, there are, now that this is a multi-tenant building, there are more loading docks back there to service each of the buildings. So it's slightly reconfigured in the back, but again, still, it's, the screen walls that were originally proposed are there, they're just simply located appropriately for the buildings that are there, and the loading areas are still, remain in the back. One thing that was removed from the Lowe's store, Lowe's along the very eastern property line had a large area that they used for, I want to say, I believe it was a combination of trailer storage and recyclable storage, that sort of thing. That, of course, has been removed because they don't have the need for that kind of a, that kind of a thing. Sidewalks, on page six of 12, we discuss sidewalks, and the sidewalks in front of the, in front of the stores are certainly reconfigured to be more in keeping with the retail nature of this, whereas Lowe had bump outs in larger areas in certain places, particularly their entrance, and then in front of their garden center. They did that primarily because they intended to do some outdoor storage, and you may remember or recall that they came before you and requested that they could do those outdoor storage areas. These stores haven't and will not request those kinds of things, they have, they don't have that same need, and so the sidewalk is more uniform in front of the store. But probably more importantly than the sidewalks in front of the store really has to do with the connections, the pedestrian connections within the center. Now that these are retail stores, it makes a lot more sense that there be pedestrian connections from Kohl's, the Kohl's inline stores, over to this center, and then also from this center to the pad buildings, as well as to the Lifestyle Center, should somebody want to walk. want to walk and connect to the main artery, which is that middle plaza area. So they currently have a pedestrian connection. And I'm not sure how well it's shown on this plan, let me see if I can plan to another plan that shows it better. That connects from these stores down to the Kohl's area, it connects to a sidewalk, excuse me, it connects to a sidewalk that runs along a parking lot and then, and then ties into the Kohl's store. What they don't have really is any east-west pedestrian connections, and so what we've recommended in condition, I believe it's two and three, is that within that parking field, they make those east-west connections. Again, it would allow for pedestrian connection from the stores to the parking lot, but also then through the parking lots, and with crosswalks across this portion of the Loop Street, and then on the west side of that Loop Street. Oh, thank you, thank you, Ken. And then on the west portion of that Loop Street, there is sidewalk that would then come around and connect to the Center Plaza as well as the Lifestyle Centers. This is the pedestrian access that goes over towards the Kohl's Street, and then it ties in with a sidewalk that would be, I'm off the screen here, but that would be down off the screen and go along the main road down there. What we would be suggesting then is that they connect to the sidewalk that runs along this side of that Loop Street, and in two points, somewhere in there, as room would allow, to, to connect again to the Lifestyle Center, the pad buildings, and to the main Central Plaza. Talked a little bit about phases in the next section on page five of 12, I'm sorry, six of 12. The project will go somewhat in phases, but the first phase of it is this building here, which, which is the two tenant space with T-Maxx and Home Goods, TJ Maxx and Home Goods, and then they will be doing this, this building, which is the Ross Dress for Less. The final building at the northern end of this will come before you, will come before you later, and I'll let the applicant address that. The pad buildings also will come before you later. I don't wanna say really that this is phased, I think this is moving along sort of as one project, but they will come, the site plan and design review will come at you at a separate time, as those tenants are known. The overall site lighting remains pretty much the same, with very few changes. Some light standards have been relocated slightly, but from the standpoint of the code and the overall lighting of the site, it doesn't change the, the parking lot lighting at all. Signage will remain consistent with the originally approved master plan, and if anything comes in different than that, they'll have to amend that master plan again and come before you. Talk a little bit about screening and trash enclosures. Currently, they haven't shown trash enclosures, and we did not get any details on those. I would assume the pad buildings obviously will have their own trash enclosures, and they'll be required to be reviewed at site plan and design review. I'm assuming right now that the trash for the retail stores, the inline stores, will either be tucked within their loading dock screened area, or those areas that are screened by the screen wall, or if they choose to do a dumpster enclosure separately, again, the dumpster enclosure would have to match the materials of the building, and it would also, the doors would have to be painted to match those materials, so. At that point, I would, I would suggest we would probably just do that as an administrative change, if that's something that they're really going to do. The landscaping is something that, that really you have to, I guess, first understand what was originally approved with this particular project. There was an alternative landscape plan approved, as well as, as an open space reduction. So when you look at the chart on page seven of 12, one of the things that will jump out at you immediately is that their open space landscaping is minus some 3,700 plant units. And that sounds like a very large number, and it was discussed quite a bit at the original approval. What was, what was stated at the original approval was that as some of these pad sites fill up, they're going to be adding in their own landscaping, and that landscaping would specifically be attributed to the open space, so that would bring that number up some from where it was approved with the alternative landscape plan. But it certainly isn't gonna make up the full 3,726 plant units that we're talking about, at least we don't think it will right now. We could be surprised, but we don't think it will. So it was always agreed, or I should say, it was agreed with that approval, that the open space landscaping would be minus many plant units, and that some of those would be made up, but not all. You can also see the west buffer along Adams Dairy Parkway is another area where, and you won't see it on this map, I'd have to put- And again, this is the originally approved, the originally approved PUD site plan. There were plant units along Adams Dairy Parkway, they were going to be short 87 plant units, and one of the reasons that they were gonna be short plant units along Adams Dairy Parkway was because the plantings that they are planting along Adams Dairy were increased in size. So if you have other questions, I'd be happy to try to address them. We also have Ken Boone from Ochsner-Herren-Her here, you could ask him questions as well, and Jeff McMahon is here also. With this, with this proposal, they will be adding approximately 172 plant units to the, to the open space. Those specific plant units have not been identified, or at least I have not identified exactly which plant units that 176 is. When they come in for building permits, at that time, when we have full-scale plans and full-scale landscape plan, at that time, we will look to see where those 176 are. We currently have an approved landscape plan on file, so what will likely happen at building time will be, we will take that sheet that was Lot 6 and ask them to show us on that sheet where the additional 172 units are to be, so that it's very clear that we can You all have copies of the color elevations, and although the, although the building design for this multi-tenant center is certainly different than, than the Lowe's design, it is also more in keeping with the design of the buildings, particularly the inline shops on the, located on the south side, the larger buildings. As you can see, similar materials have been used, they're using bricks, brick on the base, they have some stone included in the base on the building at the, located at the northern The upper portion is stucco, and they've used inlay tile, they've also got the, it's very, very similar to the buildings, so I won't go into a lot of detail about, about these buildings. I think you've seen similar features before in the other buildings along the southern portion, and that would be Kohl's, Gordmans, Michaels, as well as the buildings on either side of Target. Staff is recommending approval of both the site plan and design review, as well as the amended PUD, with nine conditions as provided on page 11 of 12 and 12 of 12. And with that, I would stand for questions, and as well, the applicant is here to provide-
Anyone have any questions for Mr. Holly? Mr. Billups?
Just a quick, make sure I read the chart correctly, that landscaping chart is for the entire Area 1, not just for this-
That's correct, that's correct.
Not quite as exaggerated as I think.
That is correct, that's correct. When they amended the PUD, they don't just amend that portion of, of Lot 6, they amend the entire PUD for Area 1.
And is there anything, there, on the pad sites, I know we're not looking at them specifically tonight, but are there, there usage slated for those, restaurant, retail?
I'd have to defer to the applicant for that, it's a good question for them.
Other questions? Mr. Trozyn?
I did have a question in regards to the pad sites. I noticed on the two proposed pad sites, there's no proposed drive-through for either of those pad sites. So if we got into a site plan review for those proposed pad, pad sites, then the overall plan has to come back before the Plan Commission, before a site, the pad sites could be changed to allow a drive-through accommodation?
That's a really good question, and one that I don't know that I have the answer without looking specifically at the restricted overlay zoning for that particular, for Area 1. My recollection is that Area 1 didn't allow drive-throughs, but again, I'd have to go back and look at the restricted overlay to see if they, either way, if they can, if they were to propose a drive-through on either of those pad sites, you're gonna see those because both pads will have to come through for site plan and design review. It may also take, take a change in the plan and possibly the zoning if-
Drive-throughs are-
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Mr. Holly.
Thank you.
Would the applicant like to come forward and do a presentation for us, please?
Ken Boone, Ochsner-Herren-Her, 2,600 grand, Kansas City, Missouri. It's good to see several familiar faces and a couple new ones, so I hope everything is going great. We agree with all of the staff stipulations, we would like to amend two and three. Jim's recommendations are very specific to the site plan in regards to the way that pedestrian circulation, or at least that he is recommending that that happens, as we did in the Phase 1 of the project. We'd like to dialogue with him about the best locations for those, and how that circulation works, which is exactly how we worked it out on, on Phase 1. So we would like to amend two and three to indicate that we'll work with staff to, to revise the, the circulation so it meets their requirements. That's all.
All right, great. Anybody have any questions then, for the applicant, for Mr. Billups?
Could you answer the question I asked earlier about pad sites, as far as what they slated for retail, restaurant?
I'll let Jeff McMahon answer this.
I was waiting for that. Jeff McMahon, Red Development, 4717 Central, Kansas City, Missouri. In regard to the question about pads, they, right now, we just show them as pads 'cause we don't know the use, so we'd be in front of you with that use. I could tell you from our experience, though, and the amount of pads that we already have out along the highway, that more than likely, they would not be restaurant uses, more than likely, but I'd never say that we may not be back in with something.
I'm not gonna hold you to the flyer.
Right. I, I think there's a better chance that it would be small shop retail of some sort than it is restaurant, and if it is restaurant, it would probably be more boutique-ish, kinda grazing-type food, you know, sandwiches, that kinda thing, not a full service.
Any other questions?
The number of protected linkages or pedestrian linkages, you're not objecting to the number, it's just the location, is that correct?
Well, I guess, I guess what I would say is, is we don't know enough, and we haven't been able to dialogue with Jim about that. I think some of the things that Jim has recommended on the linkages as they come up, and some crossing into the Lifestyle Area, there are some conflict points that we don't wanna introduce as crosswalks, cross, you know, after you turn off Coronado, you don't wanna have to stop for another crosswalk after you've just, you've just crossed another one. So we'd like to dialogue about what's the best and safest way to get people over there. We agree, it's a great idea, and because the Lowe's was there previously, there wasn't a lot of, we knew there wasn't gonna be a lot of desire to go back and forth. Well, now we just wanna work through the problem and make sure that he's satisfied that we've done that, so.
So how would you propose that we have this word, that, just leave it up to discussion as to what-
Yeah, I, I, what I'd like to see is that, is that we, we work as an administrative approval with staff on ensuring that there is additional pedestrian linkage from these buildings in Lot 6 over to the Lifestyle Area. That's what we'd like to do.
I think we're okay with that line, we're drawing here.
From, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
From staff standpoint, that's certainly agreeable. As Scott mentioned, perhaps we get rid of the, what was recommended in those conditions is that there be two points, maybe we get rid of that number and, and work with them. What we're really looking for out of this is that there be some protected walkways into the parking lots, and then that there be at least a formal protected walkway that connects to the Lifestyle Center. How that's done, certainly that may not, that may not require two spaces, it may just require a way that, that we're certain that we can safely move, move pedestrians from that site over to the Plaza Area as well as the Lifestyle Center.
And, and we agree with that, absolutely, both as comments.
Right. Any other questions? Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Billups?
I would agree with what Mr. Holly said at one point, that this is a much better fit for the entire complex than the Lowe's would have been. I'm really excited to see more of this type of retail coming in here than I was with the Home Improvement Store.
Any other comments? Discussion? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Billups?
I'll take, I'll take a stab.
Go for it.
I move for approval of SPD R1112851, with the nine staff recommendations modifying recommendations number two and three to say that the number and location of the walkways will be discussed and agreed, decided by staff.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carries. Well, we have one more on that, I'm sorry, I've jumped the gun here.
Would you like to do the second item as well?
You're on a roll.
I move for approval of PUD F2112861, again, with the nine staff recommendations modifying number two and three to, that the location and number shall be agreed in staff discussion.
Second half?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carries. As long as we have the gentleman here, I did want to bring up, I was over at the, in the area today, and I noticed that we have some people putting things out on the sidewalk. I'm sure someone's already mentioned this to you. We have some plastic flowers and such sitting out in buckets. Can we address those?
I will address it.
Thank you.
This is the first I've heard of it tonight when I walked in, so I kinda expected that comment, but as I understand, it was our friends at Michaels, and they got their first day of early spring, and they probably got ahead of themselves, but I'll, I'll check it out with our asset management group and have it taken care of.
Well, I know they do that at some of their other locations, but I would appreciate that very much.
They'll do it.
Thank you. All right, any other, new, other business, new business? Mr. Allen?
Madam Chair, I believe everyone got a copy of the revised agenda, with revised date, that is, for the Planning and Land Use Law Training that's being hosted by Lee's Summit. Because of the blizzard that hit precisely at the time that we are supposed to have the last training, like clockwork, we're, we're hoping that there won't be a blizzard on Tuesday, March 8th, or any other natural catastrophe. Same time, same location, just, and again, same day of the week, just gonna be Tuesday, March 8th. So hopefully it works for most everybody, should be a great presentation. We're bringing in an outside speaker this time, Mark White, who is a local and national expert on planning and land use law, to speak, and we'll be also doing some kinda breakout group discussions and kinda looking over case study. I won't tip our hand to what that's all exactly gonna be, but it'll be a good opportunity to mingle with, again, State of Independence, City of Summit, with their Planning Commission members as well, as I'm sure we all have a lot of- members as well, as I'm sure we all have a lot of shared stories and processes that we go through. As you can see on the side of that, it does say next Friday, the 25th. If you can let us know by that time, if you can let Karen know, just email or call. I think after this Friday, Karen will be out for a little while, so if you don't get to it till next week, maybe just give me or Jim a direct call or email to let us know that you'll be attending, or to let us know you cannot attend. So we're kind of wiping the slate clean. We had some RSVPs, I think six of you had signed up last time. If you can just kind of start over and send us your name again, make sure you can get RSVP'd by next Friday.
All right.
Oh, Jim would like another plug for the CIP.
Well, at the last Planning Commission meeting, I mentioned the CIP, and thought I would see if anyone at this point is ready to volunteer to be on the CIP committee. It's a great experience. You get to see all of the projects, capital improvement, that sort of thing.
Did you give the hand?
No, no, I didn't, but I, next time, since it'll be, since I'll be getting to a point where I will definitely have to have volunteers, I'll bring bribes.
Has everyone, has everyone had the opportunity to work with that?
I have.
It is really a great experience.
Travis, Travis had it either. He's not here, so you can volunteer.
He's not here, we can...
We can volunteer.
I'll tell you, as a member to the planning commission, I did it the last time, and it wasn't a situation where it didn't have a, you were at any disadvantage. In fact, we're actually at a disadvantage because you get the opportunity to look at all the...
Right.
Up here.
Well, we'll, we'll let you give that some thought, but we're not going to hon-tie you tonight.
On TV.
Yeah. But give that some thought, and anyone else who might be interested, get with Mr. Hawley. And Mr. Hawley, if Joe get a response here in the next few days, if you give me a holler?
Okay, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. And as I say, if, really, it's probably the next meeting where it starts to get pressing that we can get somebody on, so.
We'll get that worked on.
But I'll definitely, I'll definitely...
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Any other new business, old business, anybody's business?
Can we thank the staff for our goodies here, and Karen, or whoever is responsible?
Karen.
That you? Yes, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
All right. With nothing else on the agenda, someone made a motion, I'm hammering over here.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second?
We second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.